I'd invite you to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening and thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve our community. Thank you for each member of our community, each staff member and our council and any others who are here tonight. God, we just ask that you give the council wisdom on the decisions they need to make and Lord, that we make decisions that please you and that are best for our city. God, we ask these things and trust you for them now in Jesus' name. Amen. I'd like to welcome everyone again here tonight. This is a regular meeting of the Springdale City Council, Tuesday, July 22, 2025, and we'll begin things by asking our city clerk, Sabra Jeffis, to call the rolls.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Taldo.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Aaron Huntley.
Here.
Randall Herriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus.
Here.
Ernest Kate.
Here.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight and thank you, Sabra. We're at item four in the agenda. This is the regular portion of each agenda that council sets aside for comments from our residents. If you'd like to address the council tonight, I would ask that you come to the microphone at the podium, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand that the council won't take action tonight on what you bring forward. So, and this is for items that are not already on tonight's agenda. Comments on agenda items will take at the time that agenda is being discussed. That item is being discussed. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, thank you. Item six, what's your pleasure on procedural motions, council?
I'll move for both A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for both A and B of the procedural motions. It's brought up on the screen and I'll call for the vote. All right, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to recommend that we table item 9A.
Okay. And that's one that, that tabling is a recommendation. The planning commission is good with that? Planning department? Okay. Thank you, Mike. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table item 9A. That's just in case, to the next meeting? Is that good?
Yes.
Sharon, is that good? We do that in case there's, we want to do that now in case there's someone here to speak to that particular issue. You don't have to hang around if you don't want to, although the entertainment and everything will be great. We'd be happy for you to stay if you came for that item. But we have a motion and a second. Can we bring that up? Go ahead and bring that up for a vote, please. It was 9A. Call for the vote and it's up where you can cast your vote.
Carrie Zager will be on the August 12 agenda.
All right, thank you. Thank you for doing that, Mike. Now we'll go back to item seven. I wanted to give you all a little set. Member of the quorum court, Brad Brunz, who many of us know, Brad is a former council member here. He contacted me a little over a week back, I think, and wanted to bring a six-month briefing of the quorum court, some of the quorum court issues and activities that affect Springdale. Yeah, come on up, Brad. And I see you've got Vladimir with you. I'll let you introduce Vladimir. But I said certainly, I think the council would appreciate that briefing. I think we need to be more aware and engaged with what's going on in Washington County and quorum court because it does affect us. So, thank you for bringing this opportunity, Brad, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate being here. As the mayor said, this is Vladimir Lopez. He is in his first term, as I am, on the Western County Quorum Court. Very, very sharp young man, very well-versed, educated here in Springdale. I'm going to let him introduce himself a little bit here, but I'm very proud of this guy, so I ask him to join me tonight.
Thank you. It is interesting to be on the other side of one of these. Yes, I am JP District Four. I think we're currently in my district, so as you can tell, it's a heck of a district. I am educated, Springdale High School. I was a Bulldog. I played basketball for the Bulldogs. I couldn't be more proud to be a Bulldog. Brad reffed some of my games and so, as you can tell, he thought enough of me to support me coming over here and talking to you all, but he's very kind to me and I really do like that we are knowing more about what each of our parties do and how we support not only the county but the city. And so, again, I'm here if Brad gets stuck and we'll talk more about it.
Thanks, Vladimir.
I have a lot of issues. Getting stuck's not one of them, but that's all right. We are not here to waste your time. We're here just to give you the real quick briefing. So, I could go through a lot of different ordinances that we've done. Most of them are, just would be nonsense to y'all, so I'll touch some things that I think that you might be interested in or that you might have questions about. If you do, just let me know. First one, you know, the first month in January was spent with just procedural duties and what we do as far as Roberts Rules, FOI, stuff like that. So, it was more like a learning session on our first one. The second one, along on the first one, I want you to know that we do take part in the state organization for, for the county organizations, Association of Arkansas Counties. And that's kind of an expensive venture, but we think it's well worth it because we have a lot of, it's kind of like y'all's municipal league and it's not near as big, but it's a very valuable asset for us.
Yeah, and let me just pile on that a minute. Brad, 75 counties, I think all, probably all 75 counties are members, are paying members of that organization.
Correct.
And they do, something I'm real proud of between the association counties and the municipal league is that it was actually the year before I became president, there was a concerted effort, both on the part of the association and the municipal league, to really begin to work together, especially when we're looking at legislative packages and things that, so I think they've had a really good, they're not always going to be in agreement and in line, but they don't fight like they used to. And I think that it's been good, it's been good for both the association and the municipal league to work together on those things. And they've, for the past 10 or 12 years, they've done a much better job of that, so.
Well, I appreciate hearing that. I will say that actually coming here tonight is one of the first steps, I know we don't fight, but at the same time, is hopefully we can gain a working relationship and we can get to the point where we know what each other are doing a little better, especially since we surround the city of Springdale, okay? So, the second week, we had, we passed an ordinance of something that I'm very proud of, and that is the Community Building Initiative Grant Fund. That community initiative is, has been a great asset to where the old jail used to be, we turned it into this community initiative. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. Yes, so this was the former crisis unit and it became a, the Community Rebuilding Initiative has been nationally recognized by the National Committee of Counties as a form of addressing drug addiction and criminal justice reform that we are looking at in a way that helps people who are struggling with addiction. There's criteria that has to be met. This was a matching grant, so they got seed money and we're, we, the county, set aside fundies for them to run through the year. You know, we've got monthly reports and we're seeing a lot of success from that program. We're very proud of it to know that we're getting people re-acclimated into society, building social infrastructure for them so that they have connections when they get out of these very tough and difficult situations. You know, we've heard great reports, knowing that it's nationally recognized as another one to just know that the people there are doing great work for the people who are, who have fallen on hard times and repeatedly fallen on hard times. So, we are very proud of that program and, you know, we'll continue to support that program as it comes. But it is something that I think everyone in this county and in the incorporated parts and in the unincorporated parts who should be proud of that because it's wonderful work that we're doing.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a program like that but for victims? Or is it just for the criminals?
So, these would be victims of drug abuse. So, a lot of the crimes that we see, they have to qualify for this program. A lot of the crimes that we see would be something like a failure to appear that we would say is part of a lifestyle crime. It is because of drug addiction that perhaps they do not or are unable to make their court date because, you know, for whatever reason, their dependency has made it that it is very difficult for them to be there. So, this is a program more directed towards people who are currently going through substance abuse. I believe that is what you mean by a victim of substance abuse. Is that correct?
I meant a victim of their crimes.
A victim of crimes? No. This is directly geared towards people who are dealing with substance abuse. I am not completely familiar with all the other programs that are provided. This is just the one that we have started up this year, so we have reports on, but...
Is there a place that I can go to look up those other ones?
I would, I would reach out to the sheriff, Sheriff Contrael, in his office. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. I'm sure they'll respond. Thank you.
Ms. Taldo, I do think that what we tried to do is start this as a pilot program to see what else we needed. You know, obviously, we don't have the resources nor the buildings to know exactly what, you know, what else we can do, so we started this one, which we think is very important. And one thing that I want to add is that with this program, the people that are in the program should already be detoxed, okay? So, they should come to us after detoxification. So, we, that's not part of it. Part of this is acclimating these folks back to the community and getting them ready for life outside, so.
One of the things I can say about this is I, I was just going to say that Representative Unger and Representative Lundstrom and I all toured this facility recently and one of the great things about it is the recidivism rate for this program compared to, it's something like 50% for normal people who would not go through the program. It's less than 5% through this program. So, it's an amazing, amazing program.
But it's just for addicts. It's not for other criminals to revamp their behaviors.
And I appreciate the questions. If anybody has questions, please just throw them out. I'll let him answer them. So, the other one that I wanted to discuss with you that we had that same night was something that I was passionate about. So, those of you who know me, you know, when I say passion, that's probably an understatement, but that's when they wanted to raise our salaries. And it wasn't, I will be honest with you and tell you that we're the highest paid in the state of Arkansas. We can make more than y'all. And the whole situation that I was against the thing was simply because we had already been in the budget time, we had already had citizen reports, we already had citizen input, we had the votes, and it got put into the budget. And two months after it got put into budget, we changed it without any kind of notification, without any kind of citizen input. And so, I felt like we should, you know, stay with what we had said and yes, we were going to get a raise, but we weren't going to get that much. And I felt like we should have stayed with the, but three votes don't get you there, so that didn't pass. The HIV clinic, which was totally funded by the city, I mean, the county, is, was something that kind of become a little bit of a controversy because it was shut down within 30 days, which caused a lot of, okay, what do we do with everybody? And what do we do with staff? And a lot of the staff rushed around, found another place to put them. And now I think they are going to have other cities, other counties, as they have numbers pay for the amount. If you have so many people in, then you're going to pay X amount. So, you're going to support your own folks, just like we will support our folks. But it's in a different building, so we still have the HIV clinic that is open and I'm aware of. And...
It is now all at the county hospital. It's not the county hospital anymore.
Right.
They go through Mercy General and private, but we do give funds to them to continue.
Yeah, we do continue to operate it, but... And then, we do, we did have the, several ordinances where we had recommended for a CUP. CUP and zoning seems to be a very hot topic right now. My thought is that...
Just for clarification, by that you mean conditional use permit?
Conditional use permit, which is, I think our conditional use permit was written in In fact, I think it was written and supported by our own Mike O'Neill and it has never been touched since then. And so, somebody came up with the idea to make this a zoning issue and that got way out of hand as far as the court was concerned. They even had certain highways that were going to be zoned and it just was very, very a complicated situation. It was even going to run in right next to the cities because of this two-mile deal that got kicked out by the legislature.
We had a two-mile buffer until the ETJ legislation, yeah.
And that was in March, right?
Right.
Yeah.
It takes effect August 5.
I will say that the zoning, the main problem, another main problem I have with the zoning is that it's 284 pages, which makes a book that thick. It doesn't have an index. The pages aren't numbered. It's separated by commas. Now, I don't know how many of y'all have ever done development, but I'd like to see a developer that's going to take time to go find what it takes to do a septic tank. They're not going to do that. They're going to do what they've always done. And so, we have got to do something to improve that thing. And I think the best, our best route unless, and I'm looking for input, not, I'm not setting stone on this, so if he has some input, I see Brian smiling at me, he knows already what he wants to say. But I think we just need to improve the cup, the CUP, and make it more restrictive to the point where we can deal with that. Having a zoning, I see as being something that's very dangerous for an unincorporated area. So, anyway, you got anything to add about that?
About cup or CUP? Yeah, so we haven't settled on any zoning and I do believe that Brad is, that's the pretty popular opinion on the court from what I gather, to redo the CUP process. Obviously, a lot of pushback has come from the more rural parts of the county, you know, people out in bug scuttle, things like that, who don't like the idea of having zoned areas, especially, I think Springdale would be the one that is probably the most effective because what is currently proposed was just a two-mile stretch of industrial zoned area right outside of the city. So, it is definitely something that I agree with Brad on, that it, there's other things that we're looking at and as such, it's been delayed pretty frequently by the court. And that'll, that'll be decided next month, so it is, it's a pretty momentous occasion for that one.
And like I said, I'm not stuck on CUP nor the zoning. If people have other ideas, man, we'd love to hear them. The, I think one thing you might, if you don't know about this, you really need to get out and go see the Emergency Operations Center. That is a phenomenal building. We got a grant and I will say that you'll see, if you happen to look at any of the agendas, you'll see that money's taken out of our general fund and put into building the general, I mean, put into building the EOC. Well, under the county rules, which is a little different than the city, the county rules say that you have a year, a calendar year turned over, you have to take that money and put it in the general fund and then remove it back out when you need it, if you haven't used it all by the end of the year, calendar year. So, that's what a lot of people don't understand. They think we're taking money out of the general fund and that's not really the case. And then, we had a, something come up about a resolution about making Washington County a welcoming committee for all people. And I think I was kind of the bullheaded one on that that said, "Look, we have enough to do by trying to create financing for the county. We don't need to be out here throwing resolutions out that we had no vote on to do anything about." And I think people agreed with me and said, "Yeah, that's, that's kind of a no-nonsense type deal." So... What else we got here? And then, I think the last one is, again, we're looking for issues with the zoning and we gotta have some input by the, by next month because that's the third reading.
According to, with the ETJs changing or...
Correct.
Okay. There is a plan and I'm not sure how much the quorum courts, I think y'all have been apprised of it. In fact, there was an article in the paper about it, that the Northwest Council is trying to put together a joint...
Yes, ma'am.
...meeting.
Yes, so we're...
I think it'll be held in Springdale.
Yeah.
If it, when it happens, we actually had both judges here yesterday just looking at the facility and seeing how that would work with, because you're talking about 30, 30 quorum court members.
Right.
Between the two counties. And I think that would be a great historic, you know, not that some great action is going to come out of it, out of that particular meeting, but it does, but it does show that both counties are willing to, to recognize this issue about, about, not just about ETJs, but about a lot of regional things that counties and cities are going to have to work together on. So, I hope, I know, I know that our planning department has worked with, has already been meeting with county planning staff to see specific to the ETJs, how we can help. We, neither, neither county judge in Northwest Arkansas or in Benton or Washington County has asked for that zoning or for that ETJ change. That's extraterritorial jurisdiction, which took away the buffer between cities and where we did have some planning input. We still feel like we need to have that input and I think the counties are, are willing to do that and just looking for a way to make that work. So, we'll, we'll continue to work with y'all however we need to on that, to try and, try and make it work.
Well, and what I'd like to say is, I appreciate you hosting and kind of being the head hon show and trying to get, you can say what you want to, but you were the spark plug for that thing and I appreciate that.
We'll see if we get out of there without a bunch of fistfights. I think we will.
Well, you're going to start somewhere, you know? And I think you and I had a conversation with all of the council in private about the downtown and we were talking about trying to buy a building and nobody else wanted to buy the building and you and I had a conversation about it and that's where it started, you know?
That's right.
So...
Got to talk.
That's it.
Yep.
And I do appreciate it. Are there any questions? I hope I didn't bore you to death.
Hey, I think this is good and appreciate y'all taking the initiative to come...
Thank you, Mayor.
Make us aware. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for all this time.
All right, thank you. All right. I don't have a hard copy for somebody. There it is. All right, yes, Paxton Roberts is here and some DSA board members and you're here to bring us your report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon.
Just going to work this clicker. Okay, thank you. So, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the progress we've made on our first two quarters of the year for our city contract. I'll also be talking about some of the other initiatives that we do beyond the city contract as well tonight. So, our mission at Downtown Springdale Alliance is to promote downtown Springdale. We do this in several ways. We bring people together to activate public spaces. We try to support small businesses in downtown. We try to celebrate the cultural and historic value that is in downtown, which is really rich. And we also try to elevate the downtown as a thriving regional destination. There's been a lot of work over the last decade and I can say now today, downtown Springdale is on people's maps and continues to increase the regional awareness of people when they come to Northwest Arkansas, hearing that you should come to downtown Springdale. So, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with our role. We have a services agreement. It's a contract with the city and in that contract, we oversee the public space reservation system for Shiloh Square, Turnbo Park, and Luther George Park. We also manage the downtown calendar, website, and social media. So, this is informing the public of what is going on in downtown so that they need to know when they come down to use a park or a space, whether they want to participate in the event or maybe even avoid it, depending on how many people are there. And then, we also want to align with city planning efforts to support the smart implementation of the downtown development and the master plan. And so, what that looks like is us really working with city planning, city engineering, and city administration to make sure that we continue the incredible progress that has been made over the last decade. I think it's one of the unique things that Springdale should be proud of, that it's been ahead of progress each time the downtown master plan is created. The city has been implementing it faster than what the date timelines say, and that is something that doesn't happen in many of the cities. We also are to develop economic development services, help with beautification initiatives that enhance the downtown as well. So, I take that as when I show up to work every day, that is what I need to make sure. myself and my team is working on to fulfill our contract. Make sure you get the clicker, okay? But we also do additional things, because we're a nonprofit organization. So in addition to the city contract, we put on large events in downtown. DSA owns, so to speak, nine events for sixteen activations across the downtown area. We also lead strategic fundraising, and we try to bring additional grants to help fuel progress and offset that public investment through private donations, sponsorships, and other grants. We are, the key to this is building those public-private partnerships, whether that's developers coming to downtown or that it's people wanting to bring events. Also, launching placemaking projects and programs that uplift small businesses. That's one of the areas I'm particularly excited about, as I've been on the ground now for almost six months, is meeting and engaging with all the business owners and the owners of the properties in downtown. And I think something that I've noticed is that, you know, today, everybody I've met with, they either live here or their family member is here, and that's what I can say for all the property owners and the business owners. And that is something that is very unique, because everybody has skin in the game. I think that's one of the things that really makes Downtown Springdale stand out from some of those other cities. But what are we going to do in the future? Well, some of that is coming up with some new programs. So Restaurant Week, that's something that we haven't done in Downtown Springdale, and it's something we want to look at in the future so that we can encourage even more people to come downtown. So back to our city contract and what we're supposed to be doing. So maintaining that website and the events calendar, we've had over 125 events listed on that calendar this year. We've posted over 200 social media updates and stories. We've distributed over 28 newsletters. It's a weekly newsletter letting people know what's coming downtown, and we have over 4,000 people that get that newsletter each week. Our open rate is above industry average, with over 50% of the people opening it, which is great compared to our peers. We've also sent press releases out to the media in the region to get people and bring awareness to downtown. So speaking of the website, so we maintain that downtownspringdale.org, which is a landing point, so it's not only used for people who are looking to come down and events, but is also looked at by developers and people looking to relocate or open businesses downtown. We also launched a dedicated Luther George Park section of the website that has the calendar of events as well as the reservation information so that the public can access it. For 2025, over the remainder of the year, I want to overhaul to make it easier for people to access the information, the rules, the regulations, how to reserve, so that we can have that park activated even more. And I think that we can do that to make improvements. Public space management, so as I mentioned before, we oversee the reservations. So when people fill out the form, we process all the paperwork internally. We make sure they fill out the forms correctly. We follow up with them after the public events committees to ask additional questions, to get the details, to coordinate with Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Police, and Fire, to make sure that everybody is prepared when these events come. We're averaging over one event a week now in downtown. We have over 55 events on this calendar, which is really incredible. I know that when I was here and had an office in Downtown Springdale 10 years ago, there wasn't that many events happening, so it's quite a lot of progress, and we're really proud of it. We also coordinate and communicate the street closures of downtown. As everybody knows, if you're coming downtown to visit a business or just driving through, you need to make sure everybody is aware that a street's going to be closed so that they know how to get around. We also administer the Public Events Committee, in which we've had seven of those each year, which has members from Fire, Police, Planning, Administration, Engineering, all the departments are available, so to make sure that they can ask questions and that they're aware of the events that are coming and how the city needs to be prepared for those events. For 2025, we've had meetings already with city administration on streamlining, improving that process, both the reservation system and how the application process works. I want to make it as efficient as possible for those departments to come through, have the information they need, spend the least amount of time that's possible in approving those events, or flagging those events that we need to get everybody together to have a conversation about. I really think that we can make it both easier for the public and for the city to administer this in the future. So as we all know, Luther George Park opened late last year, did incredible community celebration, and more recently, we just completed the punch list, and the park has officially been turned over to the city. So we're really excited about the remainder of the year and next year for programming in the park. So far this year, there's been eight community events. There would have been more, but we've all known that we've had quite an incredible spring with the rain and events and canceling many of the events that were planned. But we've also launched a new reservation portal, and we published a seasonal programming schedule for the park. We're currently planning a Monarch Flight Festival, where we expect several thousand families to come to Luther George Park this fall and experience the incredible park. We're also meeting with Parks and Recreation to plan fall activities, yoga, movies, et cetera. They've already done one movie night in the park that was very successful, and we want to see more of that to get the families down. And also maybe a food truck concert series. So we're actively working with both the city and partners to program the park even more. For 2025, we need to work on developing a comprehensive, long-term music market programming plan. This can be really important. For '26, we need to go into '26 with a good plan, and that is something we're getting the partners together, the donors to the park, so we can really talk about what's going to happen there next year. And speaking of that park, as you know, you know, the park and its revitalization is getting used a lot more than it was in the past. One of the things we'll be doing later this year is conducting census counts of who's using the park and getting feedback. But with that is a lot more to maintain. I can't thank Parks and Recreation enough and their, and their staff. Every time there's an event, they have people there making sure the trash is picked up both before, during, and after the event, and we could not have a thriving downtown without them. It's critical that they continue to receive the support they need so that that park can be maintained, so that these events that want to come down and use the park will be able to continue to do so. Because the reality of it is, these events can go to other cities, and right now, a lot of them want to come to Downtown Springdale, and it creates an amazing economic impact and highlights people of what we have to offer. Additionally, under our city contract, we provide downtown development support. So to date, we've been, we've interacted with over 35 new developers and business owners looking to come to downtown, whether these are projects in process or they're just looking to relocate a business downtown. We've talked with ice cream shops, frozen yogurt shops, new bar owners, restaurants, even somebody that wanted to bring a meadery to downtown, not as in the meat word, but in the old ale mead. So we're really excited that a lot of people have Springdale on the radar. We also have provided input directly with city planning on the downtown parking and the downtown housing study. This is something that will be coming up in August that you all will hear more about, but we've tried to make sure that we're a conduit, both for residents and businesses, to interact with the city and feedback on these plans. In fact, we're hosting on August 4th, a downtown stakeholder session. We're inviting all the businesses in downtown to come and talk to us, give us feedback about the events, give feedback about the development, what are their challenges, and how can we support them? So we encourage any of the council members to come to that if you'd like. We'll also be hosting a downtown master plan update when H3 returns later this year so that we can make sure we can bring the community along with these potential improvements and changes. As far as facilitating growth, we're supporting the onboarding of new tenants to downtown. When I find out a new business is coming downtown, I try to pop in as soon as possible and ask them how we can be of support. It's really critical that we try to give them the best chance of success. We also connect city's planning and staff with local property owners to discuss lighting needs, food truck implementation, and also parking. We've been coordinating actively with stakeholders to increase the parking supply and improve parking wayfinding in downtown. I think this will be one of the big issues coming up over the coming years, and we're trying to get ahead of it. How are we doing that? We're coordinating the stakeholders meeting together, both city officials and private developers, people that own property in downtown. We've had several meetings. We're working on implementing some technology that can allow the public to be more knowledgeable of where parking is. We've also worked with city to create some new temporary signage, it's actually out there on the street tonight, that lets people know that when you drive down Emma, there's a sign that says "Free Public Parking" this way, and you can navigate yourself to that public parking. What we've found is that there is a lot of parking on the streets. Once Emma fills up, there is parking on Johnson and Meadow. We just need to let people know that it's there. So we're trying to work actively to educate people that you can actually find parking, and there is more than you might think. We've also implemented and piloted some shuttle programs. So during some of the events that we put on, we've got some golf carts donated, and we've been running shuttles back and forth from the city lots. That helps get people both to the businesses but also to those events as well, and we'll continue working on other programs like that. Beautification of public space, greening and art projects. I can't take credit for this, I wish I could, but the Shiloh Square turf upgrades have been monumental in terms of its impact to downtown. I can say that when I first came on the ground, nobody was ever in that grass area. It was muddy half the time. But since that turf has been put down, every day that I go downtown, somebody is working there. I'd like to see additional turf in other places in Turnbo Park as well, because it increases the use of the park. But we've also been working, and I would just want to thank the city administration and the city staff for doing that, because it really has improved. Public art planning, so engaging with artists to activate the street, talking about how can we make the celebration of Christmas even bigger? How can we celebrate the cultural heritage of Dia de Muertos? So we're working with artists to figure out ways that we can bring and reflect Springdale on the street during those holidays. I've also been participating in a regional recycling stakeholder committee meeting. So the Northwest Arkansas Council is coordinating a group all across the region the cities are participating, looking at how can we bring more efficiency, give the cities more power in their contracts with recycling and trash, and what can we do to make that more efficient? So we're actively participating in that and including supporting the city's recycling pilot study that's going on right now. We'll be inviting them to our upcoming August 4th meeting so that they can interact with the stakeholders to educate them about that pilot that's going on. And in the future, we're still going to continue partnering with the city administration to shape these downtown trash and recycling. As we get more growth, we need to get ahead of it. You know, if we don't, then one day you'll have 37 dumpsters in the parking lot, and it'll smell really bad. So it's something that we really need to look at now before we have even more restaurants and businesses in downtown. We also provide economic services and business support. So this includes both business retention and recruitment. And I, this is a part of my job I take really seriously, because we, and I've tried to meet with as many business owners as I can, and we'll continue to do that over the rest of the year, because if something's happening in downtown, whether it's an event or a program, and it's having a negative impact on the business, we need to really look at what we can do to improve that, and then work with those business owners to provide solutions. We've already done that once this year with an event that was coming down, and we were able to restrict a parking lot that was private to business customers only and sign it. So that way, the people coming downtown for events wouldn't take up that parking, and that restaurant could stay open that night. We've also supporting the new businesses that are coming in. So Backroom Social Club just opened up. We also have the Springdale Pool Lounge coming soon, and trying to maintain consistent communication with the downtown business owners. In the future, we need to move around talking about what does a farmer's market look downtown or a Greenway Market? We also need to look at the outdoor dining district. That is probably one of the biggest kind of untapped opportunities in downtown, is to promote that across the region. But we need updated wayfinding, updated signage, and also a promotional campaign, so we can let people across the region know about our outdoor dining district. We've also been having discussions about a revitalization of Shiloh Square. So that's something we're particularly excited about in the future over the coming years, that when that new hotel is built and people are up on that top floor and they're looking down, they want to go across the street and experience Turnbo Park and Shiloh Square, and I think there's incredible opportunity to just make downtown even more vibrant. So kind of back to outside of the city contract, we also have DSA-initiated events and programming. Our street dinner this year sold out with over 400 guests. We utilized a local restaurant to serve the meal, Bien Venu. We had 15 volunteers and over 18 businesses sponsor that event this year. We put on the Natural State Criterion Series, where we hosted over 910Ds over the course of those three events, both spectators and racers. We also worked with businesses to have a positive impact that night. So we piloted a voucher program where the racers, everybody that signed up, got a $10 voucher to walk into a business and redeem it, and then we paid the business back when they did. That is something we're going to keep working on, more programs like that, to really have these events benefit the business owners. We've also started a policy internally where if we do an event downtown, we reach out to all the restaurants first to see if they'd like to participate and serve food, whether it's a food truck or an event, before we go outside and look at anybody else. And so far today, we haven't had any outside vendors at our DSA events. It's been all downtown restaurants. In 2026, we want to support even more vibrant downtown through events. We've already had conversations with many stakeholders about how can DSA support a July 4th parade that is even bigger and better, something I remember from my childhood, and I want to love to see and help see how we could work with the rodeo and other partners to really enhance that. We've also had conversations around creating some sort of veteran celebration or a veterans and family celebration next year. I think it's an opportunity for Springdale to really show its love and support for veterans. So in terms of impact, this year, from our estimates, we've had over 16,000 people come downtown for events. We've had over 20,000 website visits. We've had over a half a million people reached on Facebook and Instagram through our social media. We've also received a lot of positive press in local blogs, papers, and websites. So looking ahead, near-term goals, I want to keep working with the city departments to increase efficiency and cooperation around managing those public spaces downtown. We want to look at some fall programming this year. Small Business Saturday, how can we pilot some programs that we could do each year? We want to increase the number of events and activations in Luther George Park, and the organization is going to be going through a three-year strategic and financial plan, something coming in. It's a new opportunity. When the new executive director comes in, we can take a look at who we are, what we're doing, and how we're doing it. And one of our primary goals would be to create a very strong foundation that what DSA needs to lead us into the future, and so that we can come through with what we come in here and tell you we're going to do in the future years. Long term, we need to keep focusing on diversifying ourselves financially and being sustainable. I don't know what that looks like yet, but in the future updates, I'll try and communicate that to you as we figure that out. Also, creating and implementing a comprehensive marketing and promotion plan for Downtown Springdale. We have so much to be proud of in Downtown Springdale. We need to let the region and the state of Arkansas know so that when people are coming, they know that Spring, Downtown Springdale should be on their map. But in order to do that, we're going to have to create a plan, and we're going to have to spend some money to do it, and I think there's a huge opportunity there, because we now can compete with those other downtowns. And then finally, expanding business and developer support, parking improvements, and downtown wayfinding. All right, thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions, and I'd love to follow up with any of you in the future. I'd love to hear your thoughts and feedback on downtown.
Where, where and when is the meeting on the 4th?
It is going to be at the medium, and I'll get a time back to you. I can send that out in a follow-up.
Let me, I'll go ahead and chime in while there are thinking of more questions, but I was at, I had the privilege to speak, I was the program at the Rogers Rotary Club, and, and I got to talk about all, great things going on all over Springdale, but I will tell you when it came to question and answer time, the vast majority of questions were, and comments were about Downtown Springdale and all the great things going on in Downtown Springdale. So, and after the meeting, several of those Rogers residents made it a point to come to me and tell me how excited they are about our downtown and about the changes downtown. They got a great downtown, great things going on there too, but it's a different experience in Downtown Springdale. They made it very clear, but they're very excited about it and wanted to congratulate Springdale, this council and the DSA and everyone who made, who is making that possible for, for the great changes going on and the great momentum we have going on in downtown. Just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Paxton.
All righty. As Sharon makes her way, Sharon Tromberg, our Director of Planning and Community Development, she'll bring the planning report.
All right, so I'm actually going to piggyback off of some of the stuff that Paxton just presented. He did a fantastic job, but I want to give a quick overview of just some of the recent developments that we've seen downtown. They correspond to that map outlining. They correspond to that map outlining that I just gave to you guys. But I also want to take the time to, to express how much planning appreciates and supports the work that the DSA does. And as we go through some of these pretty pictures of, of these new developments, it's important to remember that these aren't just buildings, but these are, these are places where people are going to gather, where ideas grow. Since I started with the city, I'd always heard about the revitalization of downtown Springdale and a lot of chatter around it. And now that I'm in the thick of it and dealing with so many of the details, I can tell you that this revitalization is not just about replacing the old, but it's about preserving, it's about preserving what makes Springdale special, what's meaningful in our downtown so that we can create space and new, new space for the new chapter of downtown Springdale. So I appreciate everything that Paxton did and presented. Now to the pretty pictures. So the senior center obviously coming way ahead schedule, looking wonderful. So Big Emma, 77 residential units. This is a downtown development. It was approved a couple of years ago, but they are finishing up construction. And this is one where they've guaranteed that 20% of the units that they will have will be for workforce housing, which is very exciting. This one is a newly approved large scale that was a planning commission, I think last month, called Greenway Grove. We are... Forty-two units that are going to be, and they're going to be courtyard row homes and townhouses, the Sundry Hotel that's coming.
Before you move past the Greenway Grove, can you tell the council exactly where that is?
Yes, so this one, it should be pointed out in the map. It's on East Maple and Water and Success.
Okay.
So just south of Luther George Park. The Sundry Hotel, which were very exciting, 124 rooms, meeting spaces, restaurants, the Star, which I think there's a grand opening tomorrow, which is looking fantastic.
There's a grand opening at 10:00 in the morning, or the ribbon cutting at 10:00 in the morning and then a VIP event. Of course, everyone is invited, I think from 6:00 to 8:00 tomorrow night.
Fantastic. It looks great. And Via Emma, which has gone vertical now, and this is over there at the corner of Park and Emma. Via Emma, 151 living units that we're going to have. And there's going to be commercial on that bottom floor that's actually around Emma. And this one's kind of neat where the parking is actually internal, so it's kind of hidden around the buildings. I saw that they've already completed some of the, the street improvements and parking for Meadow.
Right.
Anyway, I just wanted to piggyback off that and tell Paxton and the DSA thank you. All right. Thank you for tabling item 9A. So the first one we have tonight, this is a rezoning. It's for Red Barn Bakery, who is bringing a development to Springdale, going to be on Highway 412 East, just west of Dix Smith, and they're actually going to share an ingress egress with Domino's. They have a non-large-scale development under review right now, and they are seeking a C5 zoning. And the title of this reads, "An Ordnance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-25-34. Certain lands located at 2368 East Robinson Avenue from a general commercial district to a thoroughfare commercial district within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency." And we highlighted just a few fun pictures to see what's coming.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. I got fixated there on the word doughnuts.
I know.
Yeah. I thought it was Red Barn Bakery and I saw doughnuts. Great. Just what I need. Great. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
Just one quick comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Because I'm afraid Mr. Watson's going to point this out. Under the layman's description, it says 368. I think that's supposed to be 2368.
2368, okay.
We'll need to change that in the ordinance. Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good catch.
Anyone in the audience need to come in? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carries eight zero.
I started to make a tacky comment about police parking at the doughnut, but I didn't want to do that. I think that's a, that's a, that's a stereotype we should be long past, so.
I was going to say that should help with recruiting.
Great, great. All right, Sharon.
All right, our next item, this is a rezoning on Wagon Wheel. It's for a church, Eldorado Missionary Baptist Church, is seeking to make this location their home. So they are requesting to rezone from Agricultural to P1. The title of this reads, "An Ordnance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-25-36. Certain lands located at 3323..." I am so sorry, hold on one sec. "And the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-25-36. Certain lands located at 3323 Wagon Wheel Road from Agricultural District to an Institutional District within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
Emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carries eight zero.
All right.
Our next item, it's a rezoning for a residential piece of property on North 56th Street. And ahead of an informal, informal plat that the property owners are seeking to submit for city review, they need to come in zoning compliance, so they're seeking to go from A1 to SF2. The title of this reads, "An Ordnance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-25-37. Certain lands located at 3280 North 56th Street from an agricultural district to a low-medium density single-family residential district within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance be adopted.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? All right, call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
Move the emergency clause be adopted. Second.
And call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carries eight zero.
Thank you. And the last rezoning that we have tonight is for a piece of property requesting to go from C2 to a residential zoning. This is, it's accessed off Johnson Road. However, there is some access, vehicle access to Sunset Avenue. The title of this reads, "An Ordnance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-25-38. Certain lands located at east, east of Johnson Road, south of West Sunset Avenue from a general commercial district and a thoroughfare commercial district to a high-medium-density multifamily residential district within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
What was the public input on that?
There was actually no input from the public. There was a split vote by the planning commissioners, but no public comments at planning commission.
It was 6-2, exactly. Am I remembering right? Must have one gone.
So that road through there, is that a private drive that's attached to that parcel?
Um, it's an access easement. It's a legal access easement that exists, and I think the business currently kind of uses some of it as parking. It might be used as an emergency access for development. Those details of how it would be used would, would come later, but obviously the main access is looking to be off Johnson Road.
So is that the reason they bought the lot next to them, I guess, because they see their parking going away, or is that?
I'm not sure, potentially, but.
So I know this is just a rezoning, but is, is there any chance that they want to have access to Johnson Road?
Yes, yeah, I think, I think the main access would be Johnson Road. Did I hear your question right?
Yeah, so they'd have, they'd have access on Sunset and Johnson, so right here doesn't show it, but I'm assuming that they would.
They do, right, right now they have a legal access that goes up to Sunset, but it could potentially be utilized as like a secondary fire access or emergency access if the development came.
I would, I would anticipate the main entrance will be off Johnson Road.
That would be our recommendation.
Is that concerning though, with Tyson being on the corner and a school being right on the other side of the neighborhoods? Is that a concern for traffic on Johnson Road? Should the access not head out to the highway that's four lanes rather than Johnson Road that's two and you have a major corporation and a school?
Potentially. And no development plan has been submitted thus far, but I do have a feeling, I mean, Johnson is a collector road, so busy and Sunset being an arterial, that when, when and if a development plan is submitted, I anticipate conversations with engineering department about traffic flow and what would be the best.
Well, it's also the, the road in which Tyson down the street with their feed mills are allowed to send their trucks back and forth down that road. I just think that needs to be considered.
Is the emergency access, is that big enough for a private street or a city street?
I, I'd have to look at, I'd have to look at the survey and see how big it is. It, it wouldn't, at this point, it wouldn't be recommended as a main point of ingress or egress. I think at this moment, the restaurant actually has parking through it, but because it's a legal access easement and part of the property, we wanted to highlight it as.
I think in the grand scheme of things, and you know, all that'll be worked out, but, but the traffic generated by MF16 there might not be as much as we anticipate, as you, as you initially think, when in the grand scheme of things, especially with all the other, all the other development along Johnson Road.
And MF16 doesn't guarantee 16 units an acre. They would have to meet certain multifamily design standards and meet those incentives to actually get that full amount. And the multifamily, we still require that 20% be open green space. So we, we try to ensure that a development, even if it's medium-high density, is still done appropriately.
I mean, we need this kind of development in Springdale. It's obvious. I mean, there's no doubt whatsoever. I just want to make sure that we are also keeping in line with our traffic studies.
Ben, do you know if there are any plans for Johnson Road expansion to widen that, especially down at, from this point on?
Not currently any, in any programming to widen Johnson Road, no.
So even like the, at the stoplight now heading north, the, there's a striped area that looks like it could be turned into partial turning there to help alleviate some of that left turn to the west. Could that be at least considered?
Sure, we can look into it. I mean, this, right now this is just a rezoning. We've looked at nothing related to traffic or anything else.
Just wanted to plant the seed.
So I know you called Sharon, I know you called it an easement, but I don't, I'm not sure that's really an easement. I mean, it looks to me like it's part of the track.
It is.
So it's not really an easement, so they're, they're going to, that's something that's going to be rezoned as well. It's going to be rezoned to MF16, that little strip. And I don't know how, you say you're not going to recommend it be used as a access, but they own it. I don't know how we keep them from using it. Honestly, maybe we can.
Ernest doesn't believe it's wide enough.
Probably not wide enough.
I thought it was 98 feet across there, I thought I saw. If you look at the legal description. Maybe it's 98 feet long, something was 98 feet.
Well, if, if that's the case, that's something we just need to be aware of because they, they're going to own it. I mean, they do own it.
Yeah, they own it and it's going to be rezoned along with the rest of the track. So I don't know if that affects it or not. I just want to make sure that, because to me, it doesn't seem like it's a good idea to be dumping that onto Sunset. I know you're, you're, you know, the traffic on the Sunset. Your question was about Johnson.
I think left turns out of there would be something you wouldn't want to make a habit of for sure. Yeah.
So.
That would come up during the large scale.
No, but we could do road improvement there to make even just that little piece more conducive to traffic, even if you do three lanes or whatever.
Are you talking about on Johnson Road?
On Johnson, as you're approaching that stoplight.
Yeah, and I think as Ben said, that would all be considered if, if the left turn lane needs to be lengthened for more stacking or things like that, those are things that we'll look at.
But this is just rezoning.
Right. Old piece of property set empty for a long, long time.
Had drainage issues for one thing.
Yes. And they'll have to address all of that.
And, and one suggestion is to, to try and mitigate those efforts, maybe as a buffer between the neighborhood to the south.
Some retention or something possible.
Mm-hmm.
That'll all have to be worked out.
And we also look for that, that medium-high density as a good kind of buffer zone in between commercial as you move to residential, just because the nature of having a higher density, there might be more noise, a little bit more traffic. So it, it flows well when you're approaching like a commercial or an arterial like that with that much commercial on it.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Call for the vote.
Carries eight zero. Does have an emergency clause.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the emergency clause. Call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
All right.
All right, now we are on to a few waivers. This first one is a sidewalk waiver for a new business that is coming on Elm Springs Road. So Maven, it's a commercial center that's going to have multiple tenant spaces. It's currently under review as a non-large-scale development. So this area, these, these three tracks in Mercy, it was, it was platted in 2022. So when the development was finished, they met all the current master street plans. But since then, between the time that they finished the, their commercial subdivision plat with street improvements and them submitting this non-large-scale, our new master street plan, those requirements now hold up. So they are required to upgrade their sidewalk that fronts on Elm Springs Road from five to 10 feet. And they're asking to waive that requirement and leave the five-foot sidewalk.
The neighbors to the west have five-foot sidewalks, correct?
Correct.
So this will be the only one with 10.
Correct. And it has a five-foot right now, currently.
So did the other ones get it on variance?
No, they came in, they submitted their development plan and were approved whenever the, the previous master street plan was still in place.
What's that property zone now? Was it rezoned with everything else?
It was.
Oh, never mind then. I know what it is.
So the only thing they're asking for is to leave the sidewalk as is. That's the only waiver?
Make a motion to approve.
Option one.
Option one.
Second.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's a motion and a second to approve with option one. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
And our next one, these are little pictures of what that building's going to look like. Our next waiver request is for a residential development that was approved at this last planning commission. It's called The Veil, and this is located over on Watkins, 64th and Deering. A large multifamily development that was approved. This is an example of, of what they're going to be building. And so on the master street plan, we have Deering Road as a planned connector to go through, which kind of bisects their property towards that southern end. And right now, they're asking to waive the requirement to build that portion of Deering Road. Um... they're asking to waive the requirement to build that portion of Deering Road, is what this specific waiver requirement is for. Since the city is working on 64th, and they've agreed to any improvements that are needed on Watkins, so this is just for that section of Deering. And that actual, that yellow highlighted bar is a little too far west. That corner piece of property is actually a single-family residence of somebody else, so it's a little bit less. It's a little bit in. And they would be asked to do Deering Road to this commercial standard. Now, they have dedicated all the appropriate right-of-way. It's just, right now, as we don't have any other developments to connect it to, they're asking to hold off.
So this is not the same thing as the Don Tyson extension? It's not the same? Where's the extension?
It's going to be further south.
Further south?
Yeah, uh-huh.
This one might show it a bit better.
Don Tyson's down at the very bottom of your picture. So this master street, I guess that's the master street plan for Deering Road in the future, Ben, is that right?
Yeah.
That yellow?
Correct.
Will the, is the, with Don Tyson, is the bottom of Deering Road going to go away? Or is it going to just, at some point, redevelop? What's our plan on that?
The Deering Road that you see in that picture will remain, and it will parallel the Don Tyson. So it's the access to those properties, and so it has to remain.
So as long as those properties are single-family homes, they'll need that Deering Road?
Correct.
Okay.
If we do Deering Road, or if we do a payment in lieu, how long does that last? How long does that stay on our books?
It doesn't expire. It used to expire in five years, but that's been changed.
We can set whatever timeframe we want.
It's forever unless you set a timeframe.
But if we choose to set a five-year or eight-year timeframe, we can certainly do that.
Correct.
So Ben, what is your timeframe on when you think you'll be doing something with it?
Well, this particular section of Deering Road, I don't think we'll do it until you see where the white mark is that says project site. The property that's under that label, I'm not talking about where it's pointing to, but the property that's under that label, if that were to develop tomorrow with apartments or some other major traffic generator, then this road might be necessary. Today, it's not.
Will the children's safety center, will that, if that, Deering Road is, whenever that Deering Road is built, is that going to have access? Do you know what the plan was there?
Well, the center was built before this became a road, and so there wasn't really a plan with that developed.
I guess maybe my question's better about the apartments than it is the safety center.
So the apartments are actually building a box cover crossing across the creek, because that's Little Wildcat Creek that you see there.
Okay.
And they have access off 64th Street, and they have access off 64th Street again, south of Wildcat Creek. So they have all the access they need. This is really a road for the next properties to the east when they, if and when they develop. It'll serve those.
That'll be their only access, won't it?
Right now, they have access off of Deering Road to the south.
Yeah.
But who knows if those properties will remain that large, and you know, I mean, it's crystal ball stuff. I don't know.
So basically, they're willing to dedicate the easements, correct?
The full right-of-way required.
The right-of-way, I'm sorry, yeah, the right-of-way for future road development, if we ever decide to extend Deering Road to the east. So we would have that right-of-way to, they're not going to close it, correct?
Correct.
It's just they don't want to build it right now.
I'd like to move that we ask for payment in lieu of with a five-year termination date.
Second.
Option three. Or a bill of assurance. That bill of assurance would be fine. It works the same way, other than, with a bill of assurance, they don't... I know, they don't have to pay the money upfront, so I'll modify my motion to ask for a bill of assurance not to exceed five years. It's the one I just mentioned.
Option four denies the waiver, allows a bill of assurance for a period not to exceed, in this case, five years. Say your motion.
And I'll second that one, then.
Okay, everybody clear?
I would like to add that they have contributed, or have agreed to contribute to their portion of 64th Street. So that's why we're supporting the waiving of the Deering Road connection, because they are, they're on the hook for a pretty good...
Saves us a significant amount of money on this current bond issue.
There's no use tying it up if it's going to be way down in the future, if it's dependent on another project coming in, so that's not fair to these folks.
I would agree.
Honestly, it would be, nobody has a crystal ball, so I don't want to say, but I would think it would be a stretch to think this will be built within five years. But you never know what might plop down down there, yeah.
I don't think I read the title for this one either. So just before we go any further, a resolution approving a waiver, W25-21, of street improvements, drainage, curb gutters, sidewalks, streetlights, as outlined in ordinance number 3725, to veil at Watkins Apartments in connection with L25-15, a large-scale development.
But even though we do option four, and it denies the waiver but allows a bill of assurance, does it still have the right-of-way?
It already dedicates right-of-way.
Right-of-way's going to be there no matter what.
It's not going to negate anything about that, okay? Good question. Bales? We do have a motion and a second. Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? All right, and I'll call for the vote. Sorry, Amelia, I sped up too much. Yeah.
carries eight zero. Option four, five-year bill of assurance.
All right, and our last planning item. This is a sidewalk waiver for the building of a single-family residence on Mountain Road. The title of this reads, "Approving a waiver, W25-24, of street improvements, drainage, curb gutter, sidewalks, streetlights, as set forth in ordinance number 3725, to Margarito Barsoo in connection with 2353 North Mountain Road, a single-family dwelling."
Move resolution pass, option one. Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve with option one. Other questions or comments? Anyone? All right, call for the vote.
carries eight zero. Option one.
Thank you, Sharon. Appreciate it. Item 10, Finance Committee Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Looks like we just have one item from the Finance Committee, and I'll let Ben address this item. It was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. The title to the resolution is, "A resolution authorizing the execution of a change order for acquisition services for North 56th Street Extension."
Yep, so this is an extension of Contract Land Staff, CLS's contract, to acquire 10 more properties related to the Gene George North project. These are primarily connected to the water line that's being improved, which is a 48-inch water line down the middle of that road. But we wanted to go ahead and acquire this as right-of-way as opposed to a utility easement, so we didn't come back to those folks in a few years and then ask them to sell us right-of-way. So we're trying to kind of wrap this all up in a bow all at once. And this is just for the acquisition services of that.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve. Other questions or comments before we vote? Anyone? Call for the vote.
carries eight zero.
All right, we move on to item 11, Police and Fire Committee and Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We had two items come before us, and both of them were forwarded with recommendation for approval. The first one deals with some software improvements for a city, and I'll read the title of the resolution. It is, "A resolution entering into an agreement for hardware and software safety products for the Springdale Police Department."
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve. Any other discussion or questions? I know it was discussed pretty thoroughly at committee meeting. I don't know if anyone wasn't here to have some questions. If not, anyone in the audience? All right, and I'll call for the vote.
carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Mayor, the only thing I would add is that we did find an opportunity this week where we're working with our consultants in Little Rock. We are going to be asking the governor's office to consider covering this expense for us. So we're pursuing that grant, and we'll let you know if we're successful with it.
Thanks, Colby.
The other resolution we have for us for Fire Department Fire Station 10, and it deals with our alerting system. I'll read the title of the resolution. It is, "A resolution authorizing the purchase of a new Locution Fire Station Alerting System and installation for the Springdale Fire Department," and to waive competitive bidding. Chiefs here, if you have any questions.
What will this alerting system do, Chief?
This is the hardware component in the stations that receives a signal from dispatch when it's time to dispatch our units. It's an automated system, so as they're entering call information, they push a button and it sends information to the station.
It's for internal dispatch, then?
That's correct. That's what lets, it's the speakers and the lights that lets people know there's a call.
Move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution. Other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, call for the vote.
carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Chief, before you sit down, have we ordered all the vehicles for that fire department yet?
Yes.
For 10?
Yep.
I just knew they were out, what, two, three years?
They are. We'll be using what's currently engine five, most likely. We got the replacement, our engine five that we ordered came in this week, so you'll get a chance to see a new truck pretty soon. But we'll use the one that's currently at five until that truck gets here. I'm estimating about six months, probably, from the time the station opens until we have the new one.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, I'm going to turn item 12 over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon a portion of utilities meant in the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. This would set the public hearing for August the 12th, and the city clerk would publish the notice that a public hearing is required by the statute.
Move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Got a motion in a second to adopt the resolution. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will call for the vote.
carries seven and one with one abstention.
All right, thank you. Any comments from council? City attorney?
No, sir.
I don't have anything, except there's a motion, but I just want to thank everybody for their attention. And I know we had some presentations, and I hope they were informative for everybody. Yeah, okay. We won't get into that, unless you want to go back to comments from council members. All right, we have a motion to adjourn. I think it's done deal. We're all adjourned.